Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Niggetin Simon. I am a student at the ADDOTIC program. The program has helped me to independent. I am able to communicate with my daughter and fill out a job application. I love the program because people care. Please support the ADDOTIC program, please. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
For the record, can you please state your address, ma'am? Your address. No, she stated her name, but I don't believe you stated your address. Thank you. Thank you so much.
My address is 21 Tellyron 056 Souvenor Avenue, apartment 70, North Miami, Florida.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
Any questions, gentlemen?
No, for what it's worth, I actually had you rated a little higher.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And again, I don't remember that I, yeah.
Ma'am.
Again, I'm sorry.
The two questions.
For the record.
Yes, the two questions.
The two questions.
Please come up to the.
On your funding. This is your first time before us, and if you have additional funding currently.
Yes, we have additional funding from Dollar General Children's Trust, but with the city of Miami has been the last three years.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Third presentation. Thank you very much. Okay, we're moving on to Art Academics Academy, Inc.
Good evening.
The amount requested is $12,000. Staff is recommended $4,500. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Vanessa Pierre. I'm the Executive Director of Art Academics Academy. The address is 1395 Northeast 131st Street. We're currently operating at a spirit charter school. That's at 13100 Memorial Highway in North Miami, Florida. So, this is the nonprofit organization that infuses academics, fine arts, recreation, and life skills. Yes, so we infuse academics, fine arts, recreation, and life skills to build character and social, emotional development. This is our first year asking for funds. We have no outside support except private donors who've invested about $10,000, between $10,000 and $15,000. I'm a five-year educator with my master's degree, currently working on my doctoral at Morgan State University. We currently use the BrainQuest curriculum that is aligned to the Common Core standards. And all of our fine arts and other recreation activities are aligned to the Florida State standards. Currently, we have the summer youth program right now, so the camp starts on Monday, June 13th until August 19th. So it's a 10-week program. We currently have 65 students, and they're ranging between five years, four-years-old incoming kindergarteners to sixth graders. And that's going to be held at a spirit charter school. We also have the teen lead program, which is for our middle school and high school students, which fosters, like, we want to bring them into leadership position. We focus on financial literacy, community involvement, and our financial literacy efforts are, we are with TD Bank. So, right here on 126th and Biscayne Boulevard, we have the branch manager, Ms. La Bianca, which is bringing the WOW program, the summer reading program, and the bank instructors program. So it's basically a program where the kids set a goal of 10 each month, and each month that they reach their reading goal, they get $10 deposited into their account and their parent's account. Our other financial literacy programs include the K-12 Personal Finance and the Banking on Books program. Our academics is, it's monitored through running, reading, running logs. So the students, before they begin any of their academics, is it time?
Okay. All right. Yeah, just a quick wrap-up.
Oh, okay. You said what? So, for us to assess the students, we actually do running logs, so we, it's a whole program we do in K-12. They read, and then we mark down where they can read, what difficulty they have, and then from there, we pair them into groups. So for the summer program, we have them in groups K-1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and based upon their reading levels. All of the lead camp counselors are all graduates of Bethune County University Education Program, which is where I graduated, and they will be facilitating the academics portion daily for three hours.
Very good. You answered one of my questions. Thank you. So, any other questions?
Just a brief one. You're brand spanking new, right?
Yes.
Yes, this is your first time.
I've done other work with the city of North Miami, but Art Academics Academy is new.
Not necessarily a negative. And it looks, from what I've seen, it's, you've got great ideas, and you're very ambitious. So, a lot of times, over time, you may be trying to dip your hands into too many different waters. Have you thought about, I don't know how much time you spent putting this whole thing together. Trying to save America is a wonderful thing, but sometimes you just have to take a piece at a time. But I think you've got a very ambitious program, and I hope in a year from now, it stays equally ambitious.
Of course it's going to stay ambitious, because this is, it is, because this is targeted to the community here in North Miami. I have about 65 registrations right now, and about 55 of them are from North Miami, from schools W.J. Bryan, North Miami Elementary, Natural Bridge, and the demographic that I see, of course, they're all Haitian, and I interacted with their parents, and they said, this is a need for them, because they aren't able to help their children because of language barriers, because of the work, which is quite difficult. I am a high school teacher, and looking at some of the Common Core assignments that the students are given, I have to scratch my head at times, too. So, I mean, I had to literally write a note to my sister's teacher, my brother's teacher, and tell them that I can't do it. And I teach 12-grade English. So, a lot of the times, we need, the parents, that the language barrier is one thing, and then they can't understand, it's another thing, so the students fall behind more and more and more and more. So, I mean, I guess you can say it's ambitious, but it's doable, because I, I mean, I work, I've worked at an app, at RIS school in Overtown Booker T. Washington Senior High School, so if I can battle them, I can battle anyone.
Good luck for you.
Thank you.
Good for you. I recommend you. Thank you very much. No other questions, gentlemen? Okay, our last organization is Kids in Touch Academy. Representative, the amount requested is $12,000. Please state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Fallacy DeRozier, 14274 Miami, Florida, 33054. Kids in Touch Academy is an educational organization who reaches out to the community, which aims to impact 10,000 kids by 2020. I'm an educator that's been teaching for 12 years, and my master's is in educational leadership, and I'm branching out to make a major impact. So, we have three areas that we are focusing on in Kids in Touch Academy. The first area is early development program. I actually see several kids that are declining year after year, and their foundation are not solid. So my program is to set solid foundation and teach kids at the earlier ranges during their early development program, targeting students during their early development stages, sorry, provided them, I'm providing them with greater opportunities to obtain a stronger foundation academically and socially. We also have the Explore program, which started this year, this school year, tying a curriculum with an actual, real-world experience, which helps students gain a greater understanding of what is being taught. For example, I actually brought my students to the North Miami Library. They did the I Am Haitian Week project, and we actually did research, and by the end of the week, they were able to tie into and explore who they actually are. Our unique program allows our organization to seek funding that will allow our students to enjoy the Explore program for free. We have highly qualified educators, which will construct lessons that will be linked with a specific book, which will connect with a purposeful and educational trip. Our last area is our Family Day, which is an initiative, excuse me, which is an initiative where we reach out to multiple community organizations to bring family activities, free resources such as uniform, food, and community information in a natural setting. Jean Monastine actually sponsored three kids. Dr. Gilbert Ling sponsored three kids. So we're trying to create Family Day where the resources, they have tents of different resources that would target the community in North Miami. I am a native in North Miami, so I see the need of what we are lacking. The benefits of this program is exploring with the curriculum have a lasting impact. Students will have an opportunity to obtain sponsorship, and early exposure is one of the key to unlock many possibilities. Like I say to my students, if we limit, and some parents that I actually deal with, if we limit our children, they will be just that, limited.
Any questions?
Questions? The two questions that were asked previously.
First time.
This is my first time, actually, requesting funds from North Miami.
And are you currently receiving any grant funding?
Only individual donors from Jean Monastine and Dr. Lewin.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any questions?
No, we appreciate you applying, and, you know, I think hopefully, you know, in the years to come, you'll be able to receive, you know, some type of donation. It's really tough. I know someone always says this every year, but it's really tough to allocate and give everyone everything that they'd like, but your efforts, you know, although you weren't able to get what you asked, they are noted, and hopefully you'll be back here next year, and you'll be able to receive funding.
I'm fine. I found other resources. I'm actually conducting a gala, the Spark of Knowledge Gala, on July 15th, so I'm finding different ways that I don't turn any kids around.
Well, we encourage your efforts to continue.
Thank you so much.
Please do, and then, you know, again, come to us next year and, you know, bring this year's accomplishments back to us, so we can consider. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good luck at your gala.
Thank you.
That concludes the presentations from each one of the organizations. Our public hearing's still open. If there's anyone that wants to make any comments with what was presented here.
Yes, I would.
Mr. Prevotell.
Yes, if I may.
Yes.
William Prevotell, 11950 North Bay Shore Drive. This is probably the 12th year or so that I've witnessed these presentations, 10 of them or so, from up where you are, where the atmosphere is different from down here. And every year, we acknowledge how the people that are applicants here, which is most of the room, and not generally, not the general public, how hard they work, how much effort they give, how they serve the community. And it wasn't until sitting down here that I realized that there is a distinction, that tonight and this annual presentation is really different from every other presentation that I can think of at the Planning Commission. And that is, almost every meeting we attend, it's someone coming to represent themselves as owners, as a business, as an architecture firm, an engineering firm, as a developer. They're coming to appeal to you for your approval on something of which they get some sort of, some sort of gain, sort of personal gain, maybe for the community gain, but this is one of the few cases where the people that are coming here today really aren't going for personal gain, but to really appeal to serve the community better, that this goes directly back to the community, and it is quite unique in that respect. And I know the Planning Commission is a voluntary board as well, and does community service. But what will happen tonight is, as it always happens, unfortunately, is that we have a limited amount of money. There'll be a discussion on that limited amount of money, and some agencies will get a little bit more than others, some will deserve a little bit more than others, that's fine, and it'll be debated, and in the end, it'll be sort of rubber-stamped, and it'll go through as proposed. I would like to make, I would like to start a tradition, and that is, after you have the debate, and after you have your vote, and with the, unless our Planning Commission Council objects, I am going to rise and applaud the people that are here, because I have a feeling that there are a lot of agencies that didn't show up because they've gotten so little, not only funds, but so little respect and attention over the years, that there are many agencies that have applied in the past that are no longer here. So I'd like the people that are here to know that, that after you make your vote, that I and hopefully others in the community will rise to applaud their efforts. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Bill. At this time, we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Public hearing is now closed. Panel discussion, we'll start with Mr. Reach. You've heard the presentations, you've seen what is allocated. Do you have any comments?
The staff already broke it down pretty much. I'm kind of, I mean, I wish we had more money, but we have $80,000, and how do you, how do you divide it up? Everybody has a need, and I think the emphasis has been placed on the various organizations with the various population that they serve, and I think staff did a pretty good job, and, you know, I kind of go along with what staff has to say here, the way they broke it down. I mean, I'm looking at the scores. They have four individuals that scored them, they're kind of consistent. I read it, I went through this earlier today, and some of these groups have been here before, they have a proven track record, and one of the things they do applaud is the honesty of the one gentleman here who said he's going to go back and redefine his goal and mission. Many years ago, when I was the chief, I sat on a committee for the county, and when we were doling out money to various groups, and I seen a lot of groups just didn't do anything but collected the money, and the results were negative, there was nothing there. With the groups that I see here tonight, I see a great deal of inspiration, a great deal of love, a great deal of caring about our future, the young people. I also see the North Miami Foundation of the Elderly here, who served the city since 1974, taking care of our citizens, and I want to applaud you, applaud you all. I think it's a very noble, noble group of people that are here tonight, probably the most noblest that I've seen in my, going on probably 50 years involved in government. And I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for taking care of the future, and when we do arrive at our senior age, taking care of us, who get to that point and can no longer take care of ourselves. Thank you.
First off, why don't you guys give yourself a round of applause?
Indeed.
You guys deserve it. I mean, you guys did an extraordinary job. All the presentations were great. Like they said, I mean, we only have a limited amount of funding. I mean, we wish we can just give it all, because I would just say, give it all, but unfortunately, we can't do that. But what I can say is, I noticed some of the organizations, you guys, some of you guys have a lot in common. I mean, you guys should try to get together and try to leverage, you know, some of your resources to have a more meaningful impact. I mean, if you guys can sort of come together, like the last two, I noticed North Miami POW and I think it was Suntla who said something about where a kid was shot, or something like that. I mean, team up with North Miami POW, and you guys can have a more meaningful impact. They have a lot of resources, and they reach out to other agencies, you know, they might have certain contacts that you guys might have, and vice versa, and you guys can combine those and have an impact. So, I thank you all for applying, and I wish you all the best of luck. And if there's anything that any one of us can do to assist you guys, you let us know. But thank you.
That is a good point. They should, they're overlapped, and a lot of the services are overlapped.
Yeah, a lot of the services, like you said, are overlapping, and I noticed, listening to you all, if you guys probably meet with one another, there might be something that you guys can do, some sort of leverage and.
And I'd like to interject on that point. Helping the community should not be a competitive situation. It should be a joint effort among many organizations to try to reach out to the community, and if one, if someone does something a little bit better than the other, or has an idea, that's good. I see no harm in sharing that idea, or at least assisting somebody with overcoming a problem among all the community organizations. And POW's a great example, where they've obviously become sort of an umbrella organization where others can partner with them. And businesses, businesses that are competitors, they partner on things that are serving the common good.
Yeah.
So, on that point, Mr. Gentey made, I find that very valid and something to think about.
Also, one more thing. I've noticed sometimes people, they want to see immediate results. Problems that we're having in our community right now, the violence and different things, but this is, these problems are not stemmed from something that occurred today. It was neglect 15 years ago that we're now seeing, we're now seeing the effect of it today. So what we do today, we may not, we may not see the result of it tomorrow, but five, 10 years from now, we will see it. I can honestly say, when I was growing up, like, I had the POW program. I was a kid in school, I got good grades, but after school, I had nothing to do. Well, POW burnt me out. By nine o'clock, I didn't want to see or do anything. I just wanted to go home and sleep. Before I was in POW, I was jumping over a gate, throwing an egg at a car. Well, when POW had me doing community service hours, running me two miles a day, making sure I do my homework, well, when I got home, all I said was, "Mom, is there food?" Once I ate, I went right to sleep. So today, I can honestly say that that program and other programs out there helped me to be where I'm at today. Notice that a lot of, a lot of kids, you know, they're being neglected, and we want to move away, we want to move away from that. So if we can tire them out, get them home, get them in bed, get them to school the next day, they have no time to be out there doing anything else. So, like I said, I want to just thank you all.
That's really good. I'm proud of you, you know.
Thanks.
Jason?
Yeah, no, I just appreciate everyone's, you know, everyone's hard work and labor and efforts, and their dedication to what they feel is always best for their community, and, you know, I don't think there's any, there's no words I could say to describe what it is to be selfless and put yourself out there, and even at the risk of not seeing the results. So, you know, keep at it, and, you know, I guess try to encourage as many people as you can. I'm sure you guys know what you're doing, and we hope that, you know, in the future, we're able to provide more funds to help support that, because there's just certain things that, you know, a city or city staff, or, you know, someone who's unqualified can do, there's only so much, whereas many of you, I know, are professionals, this is what you do for a living, and then you've seen these, you've recognized certain voids, and you're trying to help better the situation. So, for that, I thank everyone for the service that you're putting in, and the piece of your life that you're dedicating to others. So, thank you.
Yeah, I've been, for over 10 years, been the president of a not-for-profit organization as well, and it's, and have had to ask people for money and support, and I've had lots of people ask us for money and support. And there is no shortage of need, and there is a real shortage of cash, and it's a competitive environment. I mean, the work you guys do is wonderful. Stay at it. We wish we had more money. The process itself, I mean, there's methodology, it's, you could tweak it, there's things you can do, and you can always try to improve what you do to give the money out. This is, this is, this staff did as good a job as I think anybody could do with the work, so I'm fine with what they've done here. You know, you guys are professional at doing it, but it's the hardest stuff you ever do, and it's the most rewarding stuff you ever do. So, please stay at it, and you have my deepest respect. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. I commend all of you on your presentations, and answering our questions, and even delving a little bit more into explanations. I know it's uncomfortable at times, and it's also, you may forget some things, but I noticed a lot of you gave us a little bit more insight when we asked for it, and we greatly appreciate that, that really gives us a better idea of what your focus is with your organizations. And I really commend you for the effort that you all did in preparing your reports, that you submitted to staff. All of them looked great. Here they are, right here. I had a chance to look at all of them, and I was very impressed with everyone's presentations and what staff did. I thank you very much for putting that together. And I know it was mentioned before, a lot of the scorings were very well-balanced all the way through, and it's something that we haven't seen, I think, in a while. I've been doing this for 18 years, and I must say, everyone's presentation tonight far exceeded what we've seen in the past. Thank you very much. On that note, I want to go ahead and entertain a motion that we accept staff's recommendation to accept.
I moved.
Mr. Pinchon has moved that we accept. Do I hear a second to the motion?
A second.
Mr. Gentey has seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Very good. The motion approves for the funding. And again, I want to applaud all of you, indeed. Thank you so much for coming.
I see you on June 28th for council meeting.
Just, not to throw a damp or anything, this does go through another process, of course, and that's the city commission does here, our recommendations, and hopefully they will.
28th, yes.
They will concur with what we present to them and on our recommendation.
It will be the same process, so just be prepared.
Do as good as you did before us, and you all will be successful.
And just remember, the only limits we have are the limits that we embrace.
Okay, to our staff and commission.
The meeting's over.
No, that's okay. Yeah, we're, the items, the items passed, so we're going to go ahead and move on with our agenda here. Next on our agenda was any committee reports. I don't think we had any old business we needed to discuss. New business, I just want to bring up something I, communications to the city manager, I'm sorry, to our Assistant City Attorney, Mr. Galdes. I gave him some information prior to the meeting regarding some, an item that may come before soon, and that's regarding boat dockage, an item that we had earlier this year. I presented him with some communications on that, and I have some of the, some of that information available, if anyone would like to see that, with regards to shaping an ordinance, revisiting. I guess that ordinance would be revisited, is that correct? Is that the reason for the workshop on the dockage?
What's, what I was told tonight by the city manager will happen next is, so they've now had two public hearings on the subject, so they're going to go back and try to compile recommendations based upon the feedback they got, and try to get it on the next, it's still got to go through two hearings on the city council.
Right. Okay. And again, I have presented him with some new information which might.
Yeah, I'll review the information. I just received it tonight, and for the record, it's Fort Lauderdale's code, a particular code section regarding mooring structures. We'll take a look at it. I mean, it's still, the code is still, it's still being, you know, revised. It's a continual process towards fruition.
But everybody, you saw the note I sent back.
Yes.
So just to qualify, to clarify some of what came as a result of that, the first section that seemed to indicate that all boats in North Miami had to be perpendicularly docked, through some give-and-take with the city attorney, that was to be, that was by design to be for those areas where boats would be perpendicularly docked, that would be the case. They would be stern in. But so somehow, in drafting all of that, a sentence or so got left out.
Sure. As could happen, and we've seen it happen.
So, that's why it looks like it looks.
Right. Okay. All right. Again. Well, I'm sure we'll see, we'll see it come back in a, in a very, a more finessed rendition.
And the personal watercraft thing, everybody agrees that that needed to be included.
Yes. All right. All right. Having said that, no other new business, I make a motion for adjournment. So moved.
So moved, right?
Oh, we'll set the, I need to sign the, I forgot to sign that.